Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's regular City of Cedar Falls City Council Meeting. We'll now call this morning meeting the order. A quick announcement, so Council Member, excuse me, Chris, well, Council Member Cruz, how you doing? Council Member Lada is also here, he's on cellphone, we'll do it on roll call, but we had some technical issues on our end, so he wasn't able to get the full video call in, but he is here, so if he needs to speak, I'll be able to bring that up to the mic, too. So, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Schultz.
Here.
Lada.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Bob Baker.
Here.
Danfield.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and if willing and able, could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. And I will now look for a motion to approve the regular meeting of July 7th. Minutes, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council? And any from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any agenda revisions?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move to public forum, so speakers will have up to one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics relevant to city business. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak tonight? Just name an address, please.
My name is Pablo Mercado, I'm retired from the university. Good evening, Mayor, ladies and the gentlemen. I know you're busy, I'm gonna take five minutes of your time. And it has to do complaining about our business. And the business is that Metro recycling place. I've been there, we moved here from Florida, and I've been visiting that place to bring my own cans and so forth. And in thirty years, the place is as messy as it is. They haven't changed with time. This place is as small. You go there, and you never know when, how much they're gonna charge you for the business that you bring. And no organization, it's just a mess. You go there, and they open at ten o'clock in the morning, by the time they open at ten, the line is down to the street.
Mr. Mercado, if I can for a second, is there, because we as the council here don't have any control over them as a business, over the how they run their business, but is there anything you can think of related to the city's role with them that may be a concern we can address?
I see. So, that means that I have to go somewhere and...
For the city, just for our role as an organization, we do a lot of zoning, code enforcement, so if there's a code issue or something, that's an issue there, that's something we can help address. But we don't have any say in their business hours, or any of how they... That would be something you would need to go speak with them about.
Yeah, I just don't follow you. If I have, if I want to advise the city that we need another recycling place for competition, because they want, they do whatever they want to do, because they don't have any competition. And if you don't have competition, your services can become worse and worse. So, you know, you go there, and if you're happy when you go there, when you get, when you go out, you're mad. So, the city cannot advertise that you want another, someone to, to have the opportunity to have another...
Quick question, I don't believe the city has any involvement with operations or running of the facility? So, that, correct, that would not be something that we, as the city, would advertise for, or look for, competing entity.
So who do I need to talk to if, if they need to know how bad that place is run, and that we need another one for competition?
I don't think I can answer that for you. I apologize. Be the community, and hopefully a competing entity may hear that and look to come to the area, but fortunately, we as a city don't have any involvement with that process.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry I took your time.
No, no, it's okay, not at all. Thank you, Mr. Mercado. Is there anyone else for public comment this evening? Just name an address, please.
Kim Jordan, 2018 Minnetoka. On that note, separating out the leasur of the hospital, that's my, I'm here to talk about response time, property that we own, and the competition value that we would have by retaining and getting some capital improvements slated for future sessions. And part of it is finding out, you know, we've got a perfect opportunity right now, and it's exciting that we have a loss of a director, we're picking up a qualified individual that has been here looking through the minutes of the hospital transfer from day one, when Richard McAllister and Park Bane and Verna Klinkenberg had gone through that. Wondering if we can have a revisit as to the city's overall investment in retaining that, instead of going into the R3 district. It's a huge ask, there's a lot of moving parts to it, and I've come to understand that with all the work that I've kind of been trying to do. My fear is that we are going to be investing into a system that maybe doesn't keep up with the times. We have a benchmark of when we sold it off as a public-owned versus now, with the services that are being removed. None of our dealings, because it is on their management, but we own the property and we own the building. The consideration is, it's a certificate of need, it's a civil defense location, we have different projects that are going on, we have response time issues, we had a response in the river yesterday that would, if it would have been any more serious, we would have needed hospitalization closest, we would have needed the boats at the fire station in the North Cedar location. The DNR had followed them. But everything pertains back to our health, and that's why the communities were set up. I see it as the most amount of dollars coming in, and I appreciate that you've been listening to, like, the parks, because Ron was always on that, you are coming in new, Jennifer's very familiar and versed with a lot of it. But it's, if we're generating monies coming in, we have to have the care and safety of all those that come in. And having competition, having different sites is vital to our growth. If we start tearing things down that have historic value and preservation dollars that were gifted, where does that leave our morals, our compass, our directives for future donations? And I think there was once when Councilman Cruz had asked, do we have anyone donating monies to the city? Well, no, because everything is being taxed without us really having much of a say, just like Richard McAllister had years ago with the hospital. Just a revisit, maybe community involvement. We really need to discuss what else can be coming into that site. We have historic renovation that, when I've asked, it was not put on the registry. I have talked with maintenance, that building is structurally sound, it just needs engineers and different eyes, maybe, that have a different perspective, or how we're gonna be using it. It's so much cheaper to repair what we have now, just like Mike Wells had found with the high school years ago, and now we have a new building. Very little do they ask, what, how would you want your rooms? What would you do as people that facilitate that building? And falling short on those new developments with lots of dollars spent is something that can be preventable with reimagining, reimagining the interior spaces and repurposing the land. Fourteen and a half acres is a lot. Certificate of need, again, finding out from Jill, is right now, and this is on council, I really, I really want you to maybe look into this. The certificate is on us to recertify if Mercy One, who's the leasur, takes it as a removal with a new build. We, as a city, have purchased land, but the hospital should apply for their own certificate and be deemed on if its value to that site, not by taking a legacy or something that's already set up for health status and has been for 111 years. So, it's looking at how other towns are really investing in historical buildings and making a go of it. I think this can be a good thing for our town.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment this evening? Just name an address, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Bob Manning. I live at 2908 West Third Street in Cedar Falls, of course. Have you all looked at the agenda tonight? Well, you council people should be very proud of this document. This has a lot of progressive, forward-moving things that we've, that we're always excited about, we're talking about. I've come here asking you to do whatever you can with developers to help have some new lots. And now we've got a developer that's done that in several different phases and whatnot. So, when you get home tonight, pat yourself on the back, okay? We love these type of positive things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there anyone else for public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll close public forum, and we'll move on to staff updates. Director Sheets, I believe you've got some updates on RagBri?
Sure.
In case anyone's unaware.
Yeah, I'll follow my notes here, make sure I cover everything. So, we're making final preparations to host tens of thousands of riders and visitors this Thursday for RagBri, so we hope that everybody is excited. For, I just wanna go through the route a little bit, just to make sure that information is out, and then I'll talk a little bit about road closures, just to make sure that information is out as well. So, the route, our cyclists will be coming into Cedar Falls from the west, they'll be on Highway 57 or West First Street, but then they will turn to head south on Union Road and follow Union Road to 12th Street. They will then head east on 12th Street, go by Birdsville Park, cross over Hudson Road, come into Main Street, go around the roundabout, and head north on Main Street to go underneath the arch, our new arch on Main Street, and into the downtown area. After going under the arch, they will route just a little bit off of Main Street, because obviously Main Street's going to have a lot of things on it, the big stage, and a lot of things that are kind of in the way for a cyclist. So, they'll head on Washington Street, but then get back over to Main Street to cross First Street at a perpendicular, because we are not able to close First Street. So, we'll cross there at the light, our public safety folks will be at that intersection all day, it will be a very busy intersection. But that is the route. The route going out then goes from the Gateway Park area, which is kind of the main camping area. Well, they'll head west on Lincoln, take Levercy Road north, and head out that way. Did wanna talk about some of the road closures based on the event that is happening. Road closures, obviously, in the downtown area, everything that's shown in red is intended to be a closure, also around the Gateway Park area, because again, that's a very heavy area for camping that will occur. We have sent letters to the businesses and residences kind of in that area, so that they know about that impact, know that they can get through if they need to. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of in and out, but for the most part, we're keeping that to the event needs itself and not open to the public. The compost facility will be closed on Thursday, for example. If you wanna go to Big Woods, go from the north access point versus the south, that type of thing. Other road closures to highlight, or road changes, I should indicate more accurately, would be 12th Street. It will be open, we do, there's no way to close that road. I mean, there's, there's too much cross-traffic happening, too much need to use the road, but we do ask that people go alternate routes as much as possible, and give courtesy to the riders. It will just be kind of an ongoing thing during the day, of course, there'll be heavy periods and lighter periods, where the riders will be on 12th Street, for example, and some of our other routes. We are planning to close Green Hill Road between West 31st and West 27th. This will be the check-in spot for all the support vehicles related to RagBri, to make sure that those large vehicles get where they need to be during the day as efficiently as possible, and that type of thing. So, that, we have a couple other no parkings posted for 12th Street, for Washington Street, that just gives extra room, so that both motorists and cyclists can maneuver as easily as possible. We will see visitors throughout town. The route itself and the event spots are not the only place that people hang out. We know that there are a lot of people that will be hosting, community residents that will have either a couple individuals, or maybe a larger group of 120, for example. We know one resident is hosting at their house. So, we'll have a lot of people spread throughout town. We are using a lot of other parks as well. We'll have people camping in Washington Park, Pfeiffer Park, Veterans Park, Overman Park, just to name a few, Lookout Park, that type of thing. So, what that means for Friday, then, that I wanna highlight about Friday, is we know that the riders, many of them leave early, they'll all be trying to get out of here around eight o'clock at the latest. They'll be pushed out of town by 10 o'clock, they wanna move them on to the next stop, and get their breakfast, and enjoy some of the other towns. But I particularly wanna mention that the intersection of West First and Main Street will be very, very busy on Friday morning. It will be busy, because we'll have our motorists trying to get through and maybe get to work, at the same time that we'll have people in all those other areas of town trying to cross First Street to get on the exit route, to get on Lincoln, to get on Levercy, and get out that way. So, just plan ahead for that, extra patience about the delays that will happen in that area on Friday morning. But hopefully, people will come to the festivities downtown, lots of music, starting with Amp Camp at River Place Plaza, I believe it's at noon, if I'm not mistaken, but check the schedule, see if you can check out your favorite band. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director. And just a second, then, I know it is an inconvenience, but this is also a great thing for the community, a lot of resources, money coming in, but also a good chance for us to sell the community. We'll have 30,000-plus people coming in to visit town, so it's a great opportunity for us as a city, and comes with inconveniences. So, just thank you, everyone, for kind of working with the event, being patient, and I know it can be frustrating sometimes, but should be a good day. And again, thanks to the staff, and not just staff, but everyone that's put a lot of time into this, as you can see from all the closures, all the work that goes into it, it's a lot, so, looking forward to it. Okay, otherwise, we will move on to Special Order of Business, item number two, public hearing and proposed rezoning from P. Public District to R2. Residence District of Property located south of Quail Hollow Lane and north of the new Cedar Falls High School. Do we have a motion to receive and file approved publication?
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then for staff comments, we have Michelle Peasley. Thank you, Michelle.
Hello, thank you. To start off, I wanted to talk about what a public zoning district is. The public zoning district is reserved exclusively for structures and uses of land owned by federal government, the state, the county, the city, and the Cedar Falls School So, the rezoning of the public land started when University of Northern Iowa found that there were a few property owners that were along Quail Hollow Lane that had rear yard amenities on their property. The solution to the issue, you and I offered all property owners along this area to buy 40 feet of the property. Eight owners have moved forward with asking for this offer. The parcels that will be... The parcels that will be rezoned are in yellow. As with any rezoning, there's three criteria for, to look at. And the first one is the compliance to the Conferenza Plan. This Conferenza Plan calls this area greenway and floodplain. While there is no floodplain being within these parcels in yellow, it is part of the Conferenza Plan. The other two are public services and adequate services to streets. Both of the, both, all these lots will be combined with the main lot, and the streets and public services will be used as it is now. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Are there any qual, or, excuse me, clarifying questions from council at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
Thanks, I had a few questions that were submitted to me, folks that actually live on the street, so I don't know if you'd like me to ask those now, or if you'd like to comment.
If there are ones that are related to just clarifying some of the questions about the presentation, could ask them now.
I'll hold it.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other clarifying questions from council?
Here's Mr. Mayor, Michelle.
Sorry.
I know we talked about this previously, and I, you know, I don't wanna try to stir up things at this point. Would, would we just go through the entire process again of the, I think there's 12 of these that were offered to have that land, and eight of them took, so we're rezoning eight of them. Well, maybe the next owners in those ones that did not take advantage of this now, is it, is this a one-time offer from you and I, or?
Our applicant is here today. It's my understanding that this is a one-time offer, and that they'll put a fence between them, along the properties, for this won't happen again.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Counselor. Any other clarifying questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, I hesitate to speak at this point, because it's gonna sound like lobbying, but I'm just curious, could I tent camp on a parcel in that area, and then just purchase it later, so that I own that portion?
I'm gonna, that's probably for the actual conversation, unless you are actually meeting as a technical question you're looking for an answer for.
It's a clarification, but we can certainly get it later. I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding exactly what's happened to get to this point.
Yep, okay. Okay, any other clarifying questions, council? All right, seeing none, we'll open up the public comment, if anyone would like to speak on this item tonight. Name an address, please.
Craig Fairbanks, 405 Spruce Hills. I don't have any issues with this, but I'm kind of with the rest of the questions the council have asked, that why are they not redoing the set, doing the lot lines for all of them? That does, that's what makes sense. But the biggest problem is, this happens a lot, a lot, when land isn't developed behind. Citizens move their gardens, they move everything back there, they put sheds on it. And when that happens, and you do a development, you play like heck to try to get that land back, because they wanna, wanna claim that they've used it for 10 years without anybody objecting to it, so it's their land. My question is, how, how can we monitor some of this, so it doesn't happen? Is that part of our administration ability to go over those kinds of things? I don't have an answer for it, but I'm like the rest, I would rather see all of it go in one straight line, and keep things uniform, and eliminate the need for revisiting this in later years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fairbanks. Is there anyone else for public comment this evening? Just name, please.
Kim Jordan. I would just agree with that. In town, it doesn't matter, or if you're right on the bordering of town and in town. The neighbors view open space as a little playground that they can use. And I think it's wonderful that the university offered an exception. But if you go against what someone that's occupying your space doesn't want to hear, all of a sudden, you become the bad apple. And, you know, it would be nice if there were some preventable things. I can think of two incidences at the nursery on the back of that 26 acres, and then off on 12th Street as well. And then the farmer can come right along and take the fence row, but then that becomes a fence row issue within farmland versus residential and usable, or, so. So, I think there probably should be something, so that it doesn't fall on the, the landowner to have to be the bad person, but has every right to stand up and say, we are gonna put a fence, and no one else can do, you know. So, it's very clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Is there anyone else for public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, public, excuse me, and look for a motion to pass an ordinance amending the zoning map for approximately 0.69 acres of real estate located south of Quail Hollow Lane and north of the new Cedar Falls High School, from Public District to R2. Residence District upon its first consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded and open for discussion. I'll come back just to a few of these questions here, quick, just for clarifications. This was, I believe, offered to all the homeowners. So, each of them had the options to buy that same amount of space with 40 feet on the back, so the ones that aren't on here are ones that turned down the offer, so they did at least have that opportunity. The administrative piece, talking with staff this morning, kind of from my understanding, is it ultimately is up to the property owner to look at their property, and in this case, it is you and I who came forward with the request for this, so the owner of the property is requesting the change. So, I do think typically, if the owner felt somebody was coming to their property and did not want that, they would have the ability, we could help enforce, that they could not do that. do that. But I think in this case, the property owner's requesting from us the zoning change. And I know, again, we've got them here tonight, if you'd like to speak to that, but, so in this case, it was something that was brought to us as a request from the property owner. And otherwise, I'll open it up for council discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I think this is going to be best maybe answered by Dr. Hager. I've had one question or concern, not just one, a few concerns from folks about, and tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe that area is around the area up at you and I where the pond and like the walking trails kind of are. And I've had citizens, you know, obviously concerned about loss of public land, which I understand, but the other part that I'm asking specifically about is, will there be any problems with people accessing that recreational spot that folks enjoy on that land? I couldn't see that it would be, you know, affecting it, but I just would like to take the opportunity to ask, so people have that answer.
Ms. Hager, would you mind?
Yeah, the university is a state entity, and so it is state property, not city property. I'm not even sure about zoning from a state perspective. I also don't think adverse possession is allowable for state property, if I, if I understand the law correctly. So the university was well within our rights just to tell people to get off, right? And so we explored that as an option. We decided the best thing would be neighborly and offer that for people. There's one that had pretty serious ramifications, and we were willing to ask them to step off, but we decided that the land for the long-term use of the university, we could let a portion of that land go, and it really won't impact the long-term map at all. In terms of access, the access from the university side will stay the same. I can't speak for the private property owners once there's a fence there.
But, but most folks who maybe would park in the unidome parking lot and then enjoy that, they'll be able to access that?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Hager.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
Also, for Mr. Hager, I'm assuming this entire perimeter jogging will have a fence? Is that what the intention is? Not just those couple jog?
That's the plan, correct.
Okay, so it would prevent further encroachment?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor. Yep, go ahead, Counselor.
Sorry, I hope I turned on the room, hopefully I can get Mr. Hager before he sits down. Another concern that was, or a question that was brought forward by some individuals on this road, Councilmember Dunn kind of touched on already with the, with the trails and whether or not the property owners would necessarily have access. My question also involves the mowing and the maintenance in that area. It sounds like the homeowners were saying that they'd really maintained a lot of the noxious weeds along that, where the proposed fence line is, and it doesn't sound like there's been any mowing done by the university. Is there going to be an intent to get that cleaned up with the fence? And then with those property owners with the fence, will they, I assume there won't be a gate from their, from their property to access that area? Would that be correct?
We have not ascertained what type of fencing material will go in there, and if there's gates or not yet. We're still working on that determination. Based on the follow-up questions from some of those homeowners, we're not sure they still understand what they were doing wrong, so that's kind of going to contribute to our decision on a gate or not. In terms of mowing, it is a wooded area, and so I don't know that we will be landscaping it like a residential lawn, but it is a wooded area, so periodically we take a bushwhacker back there.
I'd answer your question, Counselor.
I had a pretty difficult time hearing, but I'll, I'll watch the rebroadcast for the response. Thank you.
And I can recap it quick for you, just so you can hear it. It's that there, for some of the fencing, they haven't ascertained yet what type of gate or fencing would be back there. Just depends on the conversations with the residents and how that goes. Currently, it's a wooded area, so they do occasionally go out there and weed whack everything back there, but it's not something that needs regular ongoing maintenance like a landscaped area would. Yep. Thank you, Ms. Hager.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
If I may, I mean, I don't have any major dog in the fight here, but I have some considerations about how this goes down anywhere else. And so, Mr. Rogers, Attorney Rogers, I would ask, given that it's state land, what are the provisions that you're aware of about squatters' rights? If they've maintained this land, could they not indeed just take that land as their own after a certain duration, or is this, is this outside those limits?
So the concept you're talking about is adverse possession, 10 years, continuous under color of right possession. Dr. Hager said that it doesn't apply to state land. I, I think that's right. I, I don't study a lot of state, because I'm a city attorney, not a state attorney, but it would have to be 10 years. And, and under claim of right, the owner could assert itself at any time along those 10 years and defeat it, and then the clock starts again. And I think Dr. Hager stated that it was well within the rights of you and I to require these people to vacate their land, and that could have been done, but they chose a different route. It's up to them.
Anything to clarify or correct there? I'm assuming no. And the concern in my mind is this, I mean, this is public land, whether it's city-owned or state-owned, it's our land. So I can't set up a tent in the middle of this parcel and maintain it for three years, or 10, or 12, and then just say, this is mine now. But these folks, abutting it, did. That doesn't seem right. I understand it's probably the easiest course of action to correct this situation, but is it right? I don't think that it's right to just set up shop wherever you want to, because it's convenient for you, and then reward that behavior. And this is one of those quasi-judicial kind of situations we find ourselves in. I didn't make up my mind about this beforehand, but it just doesn't seem right to say, yeah, this is wrong, but we're going to go ahead and reward that. When we did that around the Huntington area development, and the homeowners there said, hey, we really like the greens, the green space that's set aside in our backyards, we nearly chastised those people for thinking they had right to preserved green space. We told them, if you wanted it green, you should have bought it. So why is that the rule there, but not the rule here? It just doesn't seem right to me. And so I'm asking, counsel, I, at some point, we have to stop rewarding by putting a fix-it on it after the fact, because it's easier, and we start to say, hey, the law is only as good as the enforcement of said law. And if this law is something that we can just ignore, then none of our other laws are going to hold merit either. And that's a dangerous precedent in my mind.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion from council?
I don't know for, Mr. Mayor, I'm not looking at it as, you know, if we let this not be enforced, then it's going to be rampant running, who, there's nobody in charge, right? But to Dustin's point, it, it is an unfortunate situation that I commend you and I for kind of taking the high road on this and, and just, all right, let's stop it here. We, and again, to Doctor's point, not everybody's even getting it, that they're doing something wrong, and reward or not, it is at least a solution for this, and an amicable one, that I, again, commend the university for offering this, up in this situation. Yeah, the, the land isn't really something that you're going to build, expand the unidome on to, even though it's close, maybe we could figure something out, but I'm, I'm for getting this settled out and, and watching ourselves to Ms. Jordan's point. I've seen it too, where people, and if we go around town, and I'm sure Mr. Heath has seen this on alleys, that are alleys, but all of a sudden, there's a garage in the alley. How did that happen, right? Or a shed in the alley. But, we've had it. So my point of this is, is I commend the university. It would be a tough sell after the fact, and I've asked Ms. Frey previously about, is the offer going to be in the future? Because I would have taken this up. If I was one of those people, I'd have taken this up right now, because I didn't, you know, this is the one time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead.
Thank you. As I think about land rights and so on, it's not really adverse possession. I mean, it is if it was the homeowner says, I want it, and I'm not going to pay for it. I'm assuming there was some sort of appraisal on a fair market value determined at arm's length and so on, and nobody was held hostage, and so many people agreed to it, and so many turned it down. As far as going into the future, well, let me back up. I, I don't see the adverse possession being there. It's just a transaction between two willing party, or eight, nine parties, whatever it is. The people that did not take advantage of it, I don't know, you know, going into the future, why the university would be hard-nosed and say, oh, you can't have that 40 feet, everybody else did. You know, quote a number, well, I give it to you. But that's up to them. It's a arms-length transaction. So I guess, I'm okay with it, but to some other points being made here, where somebody is trying to enforce an adverse possession, then you cry foul, and you look at 10 years, and when's the last time somebody said something, and so on and so on. So I think we covered our bases quite well. Appreciate everybody doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion from council? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
Six voting aye, one voting nay. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. We'll move on to old business. Item number three, pass ordinance number 3112, amending the zoning map by removing approximately 0.58 acres of real estate located at the southeast corner of the 21st and College Streets from C. Three Commercial District and R. Four Multi-Residence District to C. Three Commercial District upon its third and final consideration. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? All right, also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number four, pass ordinance number 3113, amending Chapter 26 zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to allowing specialized educational facilities in the M. One Light Industrial Zoning District upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Item number five, pass ordinance number 3114, amending Chapter Five, alcoholic and malt beverages of the Code of Ordinances relative to approval of retail alcohol license by council, city council action affecting license, appeals by license holders, possession or consumption in public space, public intoxication, persons under legal age, penalty, penalty for violation of article upon its third and final consideration. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number six, pass ordinance number 3115, repealing Chapter 23, traffic in motor vehicles of the Code of Ordinances relative to open containers in motor vehicles, drivers and open containers in motor vehicles, passengers upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number seven, pass ordinance number 3116, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the Panther Farms Phase One Urban Renewal Area in the City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, Cedar Falls Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, money is advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Panther Farms Phase One Urban Renewal Area upon its second consideration. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Yeah, go ahead. We need you at the mic, just so we can have it on the recording, the audio. Just name, please.
Bob Manning. Mayor, I was just looking to know what, how many lots were in the Phase One part, and I'm going to have that question for all, all four. I know that the ordinance 3119 had 44 lots in it, and I just wanted to get a total.
Okay, we can get that to you. If anybody off the top of your head remembers?
I thought it was 43.
I think it's, it's the same number in each one, just about, and it might be 44 or 43 in about every single one of them.
Oh, every single one, okay.
Yep, so it should be probably right around.
Here comes Shane.
Hey, Shane. Shane, do you have an answer to our inquiry this evening?
You're right. It, it varies between 43 and 45, and as I mentioned at the public hearing last time, that was due to the developer wanting to kind of even out the development between all four phases. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Anyone else for a public comment this evening? Yep. Just name, please.
Craig Fairbanks. I'm never going to speak against development. That's never going to happen. However, I'm not as quite as enthusiastic as, as Mr. Manning is. How did we get to this point? Why are we here? Why are we needing the city to subsidize residential development? We should be digging deeper to find out why that is. As a taxpayer, what we've done is shift this burden onto the taxpayers, because there's going to be no income from any of this development for the next 10 to 12 to 14 years and, and beyond. I don't know how long these programs go, but I've had it explained to me that there's, that the developer sets a certain number, period of years that they think it's going to take, and then, and then after that date is set, that's when the 10-year starts of, of the opportunity to recoup their infrastructure costs. My question is, is how is the city going to get along without increased revenue when we have inflation and all the other things that go with it? It's, it's great to see development, and I hope it does exactly what it's supposed to do. We need more lots so that we have more competition, so that more homes can be built and that prices get lowered. But at this stage of the game, I don't see anything that corrals anything on price in doing this for the, for the, for the taxpayers to have given this money. Those are, those are my basic concerns. And I'm not going to go through all, one, two, three, or four, but that's, that's a concern about how we got here. We've had this issue for, for 14 years, that this amount of development just continued to go down, and go down, and go down, and there's been no concerted effort to recognize that we have a problem. And I hope that through this transition that we'll see this, and there'll be a clean slate where we can start addressing all of these issues. Ultimately, it comes back to the taxpayer. You know, my taxpayer, my, my taxes have gone up 40% in a little over four years. That's purely on, when you cut the supply of, of lots and housing out there, they continue to go up. So when you take a lot that normally would have gone for about 80,000, and now it's 150, that tax, that tax assessor down at the county, he loves that, and he just starts looking for the properties that are close, and that goes right in your tax bill. That doesn't, it's really not part of the valuation, other than it just increased the price of the lot, not necessarily the whole home. They're not making any adjustments to the total. They're just putting the lot price on there and raising, raising the taxes, which is, I guess, good for the city, but if this doesn't continue to expand, it won't go like this forever. We will have a slowdown, and maybe we're having one now, I don't know, but the, the cost of housing is, is increasingly high. And so all I ask, Mr. Mayor, is we take a good look at what it would take to get us back to, to have an enthusiastic development group. I know I've talked to a number of developers in the last few days, and many said that they would come back and develop if things changed. Bottom line, they were very happy to be doing business in Cedar Falls, but when the environment became toxic, they said, it's enough. And that's what I got from three or four of them. Anyway, you have to treat those people well. They go where money's treated well. And when it stops being fun, they quit, and they go somewhere else. But just for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fairbanks. Just name, please. Just name, please.
Kim Jordan. I also had questions on ordinance or Phase 4. But in relation to that, we are giving incentives for them to potentially sell their home, and that's what's happening in a lot of new developments, where they'll keep the house, the homeowner will, for a short term until they are assessed the tax value, and then they'll buy another one. And so, they're kind of jumping to avoid, people figure out how to do that. We really do not have anything, um, that says that they can't be doing that, but we were supposed to also have put a road in years ago when Mayor Green was, was here. And with all of these set up based on having an urban renewal area with the tax base being collected, it does not advantage anyone in Cedar Falls, and yet, it's a road that's gonna be paid for by us. The monies will be collected upfront and then set by the utilities and so forth, but it's not for all people, and I'm wondering if we've learned to set these little, um, areas up because of mishaps in things that we had done before with different, like the hospital, trust, and so forth. But the depreciation can happen when you speak about development in general. If you have a tax base, and we would've had, let's say, the hospital that was gonna go R3, um, you can start to depreciate that out, and then that tax base brings down.
Keep it focused.
Same thing, same thing could happen here. If these values start to go down, and playing it conservative, um, I guess I'm not gonna get up for Phase 4, but I would say that that would be an easy one to pull and still have everything go through, but not advantage all of that, because there's nothing yet to the, the west of that development. So those roads are really going nowhere, and we would be in control of saying, instead of the developer being able to sell off 20 of those 44 lots five, six years down the road, um, that's, I guess, that's how I'm looking at it, is to try and be proactive to the city, get the people in, maybe, um, hold tight on a little bit of it, but get the road in as it was supposed to have been.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Is there anyone else for a public comment this evening? You can go. Wait, did you already speak?
Yes.
You know, you can't come up again. Apologize. Anyone else for a public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back, just for the community's benefit, to just kind of understand some of the background on this, because I know we've got these four items here. These incentives were developed in conversations with counsel, kind of looking at where are we at compared to other communities for being able to attract new development, housing, and affordable housing especially, and that word meaning really anything under $400,000, $300,000 these days, has been something our communities really needed to help develop and get going. This was one way for us to look at that. These incentives help pay for the infrastructure costs of that site, up to 50% of it, but it's only paid after the homes have been built. We're not paying upfront for a lot of it. This project, we have a little bit upfront for some of the road construction in the first phase, but the majority of it's coming from, once those homes are built, essentially the taxes they pay at that point go back to the developer. So really, if they don't build the homes, they won't capture anything from it. But the main goal is really to help get that development going, uh, help us address some of that housing shortage, and to the point, though, it's not a single way that we're addressing this. Incentives are one piece, but I know we've also had conversations about addressing, how do we engage with developers? We will be kicking off a developer task force this week, and I've got some information updates on that for counsel, sending information out on that. But it's not just handing out the incentives, it's doing that as a way to help get more developers in the area, get some of these new housing going, get some of these new lots. 50% of all of the tax generated from this will have to go to low-to-moderate income housing, so if those qualifying houses are not built in these properties, that money would go toward a housing trust fund that then helps us address affordable housing within the community as a whole. So it really is designed to kind of help us reallocate some of those taxes that would be coming in toward getting the development going, helping buy down some of that construction cost, but also help us address housing in the long run. But to that point, it's not a single save-all, cure-all for doing these, there's a lot of other work to be done, so. Otherwise, I'll bring it back to counsel for any further discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
A few questions. I was gonna emphasize the 50% payback, it's not 100%, so it does make a difference to the public's checkbook, so to speak. But, um, this might be for Shane out there. About two months ago, we did some development code changes where the street block lengths were limited, I want to say, to 800 feet, and it doesn't seem to be applied to any of these phases here. I'm addressing them all at once, might as well. And I've said this before in the past, and to the point that Mr. Fairbanks said, when you have bigger right-ofways, more requirements for cross streets and so on, you're taking usable land away from what could be lots, and the lots become more costly for the new purchaser, which drives up the cost for my lot and your lot and everybody's lot, because it's comparable sales, is one of the appraisal methods. So, some of the programs that we put in place seemingly help construction, but it raises property tax for everybody in the city, and that's a concern. But I would like to have an answer to my question on why we don't see a limit of 800-foot block lengths in here. That's my big concern. I'm drawing sheets, if you want mine.
Sure. That preliminary plat had been approved a couple of years ago, and then when counsel considered the development agreement related to this current proposal, the council approved extending that preliminary plat. So, since it was previously approved, we're not going back, and counsel confirmed that.
But doesn't it expire? They're not in perpetuity.
Counsel, with the development agreement, approved the preliminary plat to continue forward.
So, if the vote, if we would've been listening or watching closely to say it was a point where we could've changed things, so it wouldn't have been, I mean, it seemingly is in perpetuity here, if somebody had something, they waited five years for strategy or finances or what have you, and then they say, oh, I had it before, it was expired, correct?
The subdivision code outlines that a developer can ask for reapproval to extend it if it doesn't meet the conditions of being under active development, kind of ongoing development.
Okay, but it was expired?
It was, and the council extended that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we understand that. I'll wait for comments on two and three, or I could throw it out now.
No, we can wait for those, specifically those. Any other conversation from counsel? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number eight, pass ordinance number 3117, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the Panther Farms Phase 2 Urban Renewal Area in the City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, Cedar Falls Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, money is advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Panther Farms Phase 2 Urban Renewal Area upon its second consideration. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and discussion from counsel? Seeing none, any from the public? All right, also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
Back to counsel, right?
Well, if there wasn't any, we can. Yep.
Yeah, because I was waiting for the...
Okay. Did you have?
After the public was gonna speak, but...
Well, you started the stand-up, so I wanted to make sure I didn't cut you off.
Flipped.
All right, back to counsel. Do you have something, Counselor?
Okay. We're talking Phase 2 here. Chase, can you tell me the timeline for these again? I was on the speaker the last time, and I couldn't hear very well what the timelines were in these.
Sorry, I'm, I'm going from the hip here, but I believe the Phase 1 is completion by 2028, and then it's two-year increments after that for the following phases, so 2030, 32, and 34.
So they start then, the starting point is like now, or the clock starts when the first house is built?
The clock starts for what?
You mean for the incentive district?
Yeah.
I'd have to look at that.
I don't know if that's specifically in there, but I think maybe you're, you're referring to, um, when they would like to certify the TIF tracks. They can do that at any time.
Okay.
So they can do that, they usually do that on the back end, when the project's completed, then they wanna certify, and then the clock starts, the 10-year clock.
I think, Shane, did you have something more on that?
Chase was getting to it, so, yeah, you're right, the, what counsel's approving tonight is establishing the ordinance. There's one more reading after tonight, there's a third reading at the next council meeting. What that does is establishes the division of taxes, then it's up to the developer when they wanna certify the debt in each, in each phase. Once they certify, they tell the city to certify, council approves the certification of TIF debt every November, then that starts the 10-year clock. So it's up to the developer to tell us when to certify, and then that's when the 10-year tax collections, the division of taxes starts.
Okay.
Could I jump in with the two-year increment you're asking about? Was the deadline for completing the public improvements, which is a real big interest for the city, getting those public improvements done? So those deadlines are every couple of years?
That's the 2028, 2030?
Correct.
2032? Okay, I do have, then, a follow-up on that, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
When I was on speakerphone, I was trying to point out the roundabout situation, and it would be in Phase 4, where there's a roundabout there on Joseph and Arbor's. Looking at the length of Arbor's coming off of Green Hill, knowing that there's no trees that are gonna be growing there for a long time, we're gonna have a bigger right-ofway because of the developing code we changed, the idea that, uh, we could or should have at least a mini-roundabout on a couple of these main intersections here, and doing a little research, I find that there are safety grants for roundabouts, and it looks like there's a number of them they can apply for, and it's pretty easy to argue, a roundabout is a safety feature on a thoroughfare like this compared to 12th Street and Union Road that we have issues in town. But I was told that, once this is set, you can't change that, but why can't you do a change order? Because I know on Main Street, we had all kinds of change orders. That affected reducing the price, we were $9 million over budget on that one, and seemingly we reduced it with change orders. So why can't we do a change order, or can we? The developer come in and say, well, I got this grant, now I can feasibly put in a mini-roundabout because I got paid $500,000 for it. Is that doable? Or am I...
Well, they clarify, this is not a city project, so we've approved the plans, it's up to the developer, and if the developer, this was the conversation, we had the referral, council voted it down, so I'd say we can move ahead and vote, and if people would like to turn this project down to request a change, we can, but at this point, it is up to the developer.
It becomes a city street, though, and it becomes a city problem when they're speeding. Like 12th Street was built by a developer at some point, and Union Road is, and I'm just looking ahead and seeing there's an issue here, that, um, we're approving something that could be problematic and very likely will be problematic for the city. That's what I'm concerned about. So, you know, if Shane, you wanna speak to that at all? I mean, it's...
So I think those are probably questions more geared for plating. At the last meeting, council actually adopted the four urban renewal plans and approved the development agreement, so what's on the agenda tonight is just the ordinance dividing the taxes.
Okay, okay, yep, but I'm just pointing out something that should be a consideration in the future, or concern for the future. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Yep.
Since we're kind of out, I, I do wanna remind, I, I love a roundabout too, Councilman Cruz. I believe that we have that in our policy, that when we do make plans, that staff, that's part of our council goals. I mean, we do, we do ask that staff consider, with the developer, a consideration for a roundabout, so I believe that's always on the radar, just a reminder.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion from counsel? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number nine, pass ordinance number 3118, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the Panther Farms Phase 3 Urban Renewal Area in the City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, Cedar Falls Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for the payment of principal and interest on loans, money is advanced to indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Panther Farms Phase 3 Urban Renewal Area. Upon second consideration, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from counsel? Seeing none, any from the public? All right, also seeing none, anything else from counsel? All right, roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number 10, pass ordinance number 3119, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the Panther Farms Phase 4 Urban Renewal Area in the City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, Cedar Falls Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, money is advanced to indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Panther Farms Phase 4 Urban Renewal Area. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from counsel? Seeing none, any from the public? Just name, please.
My name is still Bob Manning, Mayor. The point I wanted to make a little while ago is that, if we're feeling skeptical about this, let's look at the industrial park and how successful it's been for the many, many years, and, and what a tremendous thing that our predecessors did by setting that up. It's absolutely an A+, and that's what, we certainly hope that this urban revitalization area will be also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there anyone else for a public comment this evening? Just name, please.
Kim Jordan. I pulled up the, the map of Phase 4, just because I was trying to figure out how these were all, how it's set up to work in advantage of the city or the developer, and try to get a feel for it. Phase 4, um, and I guess it goes along with the, the east side of that, the road divides 11 more properties that are on the, the west side. So it was almost like, in order not to have a situation like the university, where you would have part of the road with an open back, if you did not choose to develop right-ofway to the west, um, you could've had squatting and different things, waiting for maybe a, a better economic time, or get the road in first, but not be held to, we're gonna have this side of the road and that side, and we have to do the road in this phase, and then we'll connect it to Phase 2, Phase 1, at coming in and going out. I guess that, to me, just seems like, how was it not set up more for the city to advantage on that? And then kind of the same thing, when you look at these drawings like Main Street, right now, 18th Street, Councilwoman Cruz mentioned that, it is very tight, and we're not gonna have a semi through here unless Aldrich would be, need a semi, and they couldn't come through Eric. But those roundabouts, maybe having potential, um, need for emergency rescue with the larger fire trucks, that, you know, we should've just had the, the through street, and when we have 18th Street to look at as an example of looking at a map and approving it, and then having the ability to revisit it and save money, or make it bigger, or keep the electrical. But that's, these are service points that are coming in for goods and services, and then it's almost like we're setting up that core builder select potentially to lose the semi-truck coming in. In this case, it might be food service. But what are, there is a correlation, but it's kind of like, we are setting precedence, and where is it to the advantage of the city versus the development? And then having the ability to reassess it when it doesn't seem right, like 18th Street, and if you could just look at that and think about how Quick Star's gonna get their semi, how Builder Select's gonna get the semi, how... get their semi, how Builder Select's going to get the semi, how Main Street?
Ms. Jordan, this is just specific to the incentive district, not the design of the road, so...
That's another thing that, it's, it's a big change that we could do now.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jordan. So anyone else for a public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, bring it back to council, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor? If I may just, uh, Mr. Schrag, or Mr. Graham, could you clarify for me? I'm counting forty-three lots, I'm just wanting to make sure if the drawings are correct. I mean, it's not really that critical for the ordinance passage, but I just wanted to double check, I understood that correctly.
Uh, I'd have to go back. It, it's close between forty-three and forty-five, and there might be, like, an outlot that might not be buildable, so yeah, they're all in that, within a given plus...
The forty-three isn't in the ordinance anyway, so it's really moot for what we're voting on.
No.
Appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Shane, thank you, counselor. Anyone else from council? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am clerk, that motion carries. We'll now move to the consent calendar, the following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless there's an item that someone liked to request separately. Are there any requests from council? Seeing none, any from the public? There's only one item, so, uh, we're pretty much considering one item. So I will look for a motion to just approve item number eleven of the consent calendar. Motion seconded, and requires a, what was that?
Did you get a second? I did a first.
I got a first, but not a second.
Second.
Thank you.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A motion carries. Move on to the resolution calendar, so the following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the public or council requests an item be considered separately. Are there any requests from council?
Mr. Mayor, number fourteen.
Number fourteen? No. Any others from council? All right, any from the public? All right, seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve items twelve through twenty-six of the resolution calendar.
So moved.
Motion seconded, and requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am clerk, we'll go to item fourteen, so I'll look for a motion to approve a resolution approving the mayor's designation of Jennifer Rodenbeck, Director of Finance and Business Operations, as acting city administrator. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and counselor?
Mr. Mayor, actually, I would, um, rather that we appoint the mayor as our current city administrator for this duration, since we don't know exactly what's going to come in the next several months. I know this is the official recommendation, but I wanted to proffer that idea as a potential. Given that our neighboring city in Waterloo is doing that now, uh, we also, I didn't bring it with me, we all, I think a bunch of people received a mailer today that talked about some of the cost expenditures, um, for these outlays, and I wanted to make sure I reiterate, Director Rodenbeck, I appreciate your role, and I, this is not at all a slight there in any way, I'm certain of your capabilities in the demonstrated skills that you possess, but I think it would be good for us to amend this, so that we don't have to change any of our current code or ordinance as far as the verbiage of city administrator or city manager or anything, while we're in this kind of tenuous situation, if we would instead appoint Danny Laudick as the acting city administrator, keeping that structure the same, and then see what comes of the next six months that there is a potential referendum on the table, just proffer the idea as an official motion to amend.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Unless you go ahead, then I'll jump in, unless you want me to jump in first?
I would, I would just...
I was just going to make, I was going to ask a question.
I guess he did motion it first, so look for a second if there's anyone that wants to entertain the moment.
I'll do a second for discussion.
Then, do you mind if I jump in quick?
No, that's okay.
So a quick couple of things I did want to, um, say is, one, I do fully support this recommendation, obviously, it's my recommendation, so I would. Partly one, to make it very clear to staff that the intent is to make sure operationally that we support the role, that we get that moving forward, um, because I do personally believe we need to get moving forward with that hiring process, uh, get a new city administrator in that place. Second thing is, on just a more technical level, our ordinance does explicitly state that a department director must be appointed to the role of acting city administrator. So we would actually, and Attorney Rogers, I, this is something I reviewed with him, uh, let you confirm or alter my statement, but essentially that I think we would have to change the ordinance to allow us to appoint anyone other than a department director, and so I do think just by that, we have a technicality there, we would need to appoint that.
Agreed.
Thank you, Attorney Roger. Ms. Robbaker?
No, I'm fine.
I mean, given that there's a, a technicality there, I mean, I kind of wasn't aware of that, so I appreciate the clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the, the intent still stands, that, um, I'm not convinced, um, that we can't operate under that, um, model, where we have a directly voted elected mayor. The directors are doing a fantastic job, the down-level staff are doing a fantastic job, so that's the, the intention is to figure out what exactly the people want. If a referendum item comes and says we're going to install a city manager through that referendum, great, if not, I would have the opinion that we don't, uh, reappoint, um, until we've had a lengthier discussion on that motion forward, so, but given that we can't make that change without the ability to appoint a director, I would withdraw the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Quick, if you're okay withdrawing, because I know any of the conversation too about the roles, that's, is what I was planning to bring at the next council meeting. So I would prefer to hold off on that till we kind of bring that conversation more fleshed out, um, but...
I was just going to say, to Mr. Rogers' point, and Dustin, and everyone, that it would take a fairly lengthy, uh, process of changing our city code and allowing for provisions that we were thinking of doing here, when going forward, we'll eventually have the form of government conversation, what's allowed, and I've asked for that quite a number of times now, keep beating a dead horse here, but, uh, it's important that the public knows what could be, uh, our choice of government going forward, so that when a referendum comes before them, they can say, well, that ain't one of the seven choices I'd want to do. That type of thing, so, that's just what I wanted to say, so...
And counselor, and that is, I think, why I want to hold all that conversation, is there's a lot of information in that, I think there's been a lot of confusing information put out about all the forms, how that works, uh, the role of the city administrator, how they function, the oversight of that, so I'd like to be able to bring that in a more comprehensive way, and just to a point you made, though, I do want to second in this, um, just my absolute faith in Jen. Um, I've been working very closely with her these last, um, month and a half, and, you know, there's a lot of work when you're taking a position that's no longer there and keeping everything rolling, and it's not like we, uh, have been sitting around doing nothing, so we've got a few projects that we're working on, so I just want to take a quick chance to say thank you to the department directors, that I know it's been a load to take on some of that additional responsibility, and I also, though, have full faith in the team of the city and the work we're doing, so just want to say thank you for everyone for helping work through that, so...
Mr. Mayor, a quick comment, then, along the same lines, I have great faith in Jennifer as well, has always answered my questions really well, over the last eight years I've been here, and, uh, I have faith in the, the department heads to do the right thing. We all communicate between each other anyway, so it's not like there's going to be a wall, and everybody goes to Jennifer first, and then to Mr. Mayor. So, uh, it's pretty fluent, we have problem solving all the time between us, and it works well, so, no issues, I don't think, going forward, at least for the next couple of weeks.
Yeah. Yeah, counselor.
I regret that I'm not in the room, just because it means I don't get to see the, the smirk on Jen's face right now, I know she doesn't like the public recognition, but I just want to, uh, truly thank her for, uh, accepting, uh, your recommendation for this role, I have full confidence that she will, uh, keep the ship moving in the right direction for us, and I think this is a great recommendation and fully support it, so thanks again to Jen.
Thank you, counselor. And again, just, I think it helps for the public to be clear, my intent would be, we'll have that discussion, but my personal opinion, we need to get moving on that process to look at doing a search and hiring for a new city administrator as soon as possible, so looking forward to having that conversation with everyone. So any other conversation from council? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am clerk, that motion carries. Move on to item number twenty-seven, ordinances, passing ordinance amending Chapter Ten, garbage and refuse of the Code of Ordinances relative to disposal by business establishments upon its first consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council?
So this was supposed to be directed at just you and I and private, could you explain that a little more, Mr. Schrag?
This was inadvertently struck during the last ordinance revision, so it's getting put back in, wasn't supposed to get struck out.
On the you and I?
Correct.
Fixing oops.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please. It's actually just Kevin likes to give me things to read. This one's short, though.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am clerk, that motion carries, uh, bills and claims, we have a motion to allow bills and claims for July twenty-first.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call...
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yep, come, sorry, I looked down too quick, just name, please.
Uh, Kim Jordan, just wondering if the removal on First and Union Road came back yet from Benton's, I didn't look through the fine print. The removal of the plant material, the hedge, the house, um, at the intersection northwest corner of First and Union Road.
I can follow up with you on that, just...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Anyone else for public comment on this? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am clerk, that motion carries. Any council, excuse me, updates or announcements?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
I think it's more of an announcement, uh, for me, it's more of a time to talk. I want to explain my vote on the agenda that led to the mutual separation of the city and our city administrator, Ron Gaines. The context in which I want to talk about it is the employer-employee relationship and the way this process happened, and the impact I think that will have on the city. I'm not going to talk about the wisdom of the removal of somebody with over twenty years of experience with the city, how that might impact us in the very near future, when we have significant retirements at important levels in this, uh, city looming. I'm not going to talk about how it may affect the longer-term projects that we have, or as was brought out today, the good things that happened when, with the city of Cedar Falls while he was the city manager. Instead, I want to answer the question for you, to the best of my ability, one that I've been asking myself, which is how do we get here? First of all, I voted in favor of the separation contract, because I wanted to make sure that Ron had as soft a landing as possible, given the removal that he couldn't stop. The reality is that on May twelfth, no, since, since I became a city councilperson a year and a half ago, Mr. Gaines has asked, been asking for an evaluation, as most employees do. You want to be evaluated, you want to know where you stand. That evaluation is supposed to be conducted by the mayor, it's my understanding, in that year and a half, it did not take place. On May twelfth, our mayor emailed the mayor of the City of Dubuque, and asked, hey, do you have a form for evaluating your city manager or city administrator? It was replied to on May twenty-seventh. On May twenty-seventh, Mr. Gannfield sent an email to the council regarding a referral, asking to terminate the contract of Mr. Gaines. My understanding from that is that it had no traction. There are only two people in support of that referral at that time, mind you, this is May twenty-seventh. It did not make the agenda in the first meeting of June, but then, I came to learn through the mayor, that now, there were the votes, a day or two later, to support the removal of Mr. Gaines. I was not one of those, and I don't know how we got there. As a matter of fact, on that June first, I believe, whatever the Sunday was, I came down here and met with the mayor for a good two hours, and Ms. Christman and Ms. Dunn, and we talked through this, and I voiced my concern about why I did not believe this was the way, if this was indeed the wisest decision, that we should go about it. As a matter of fact, in the email that Mr. Gannfield had sent to us, he's expressed his long-held belief that we need to have a city administrator with the highest level of certification. We will have difficulty finding that, given this process. We will have difficulty finding internal hires because of the way we did it. Again, I'm not going to debate the wisdom of it, but I want to answer for you, as I try to answer for myself, how did we get here? And I wanted to explain my vote, just at least to ensure the compensation package for Mr. Gaines. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
I would also like to, uh, kind of make the same sort of, um, update or explanation to the citizens and staff of the City of Cedar Falls. You know, I, I think about, um, you know, citizens have approached me in, since the last election, and, um, they often ask, how's it going? And they, they think, they say, it looks like it's going better, and, and, you know, for a good while, I thought it, yeah, I felt it was, and my, my response was always, even though we may not always agree on everything, uh, it is nice to sit with folks who you trust want the best for Cedar Falls. That's changed in the last month and a half, two months. I've gone from trusting this body to having little to no trust. I can accept that we don't agree. What I can accept is when a decision is made without discussion as one body, be it in an open meeting or a closed session. I just heard multiple people say lengthy discussion after lengthy discussion, that must just be for certain folks, because I, I, I definitely don't feel like I'm on the end to be getting lengthy discussions. Mayor, I can remember speaking to you recently, uh, and I, and I voiced to you very passionately, and you sat there with me, and I know sometimes I can be very passionate, I'll give you credit, you sat there, but I said that there was a, a communication problem, and that I didn't feel that I was getting communication, and I felt some council folks, no matter, you know, I don't care what their title is, or what committee chair, or whatever they are, we all are seven elected people by the citizens of this community, and we all deserve communication. Now, some of us, you know, some people can come in and out, you know, we all have different schedules, and that's fine, I, I love that, but no matter what, it's your job, or whoever has the information, to get it to all of us. I told you that I felt, oh, okay, I just saw that, I remember saying that it doesn't matter, um, okay, I remember telling you that I have a problem with meeting, I also said, and I've said this, I think, since when you first got elected, I said, I don't want casual coffee meetings, because this, this has been a thing, not just you, but casual coffee meetings, to me, are casual, it's talking, bouncing ideas, but the real decisions are to act, happen in this chamber, or back there. And there's been a time that I think, I, one day you said something, I was like, I just can't picture being for it. Well, guess what, we all came here, and we talked, and I respect the folks that I sit with, and I, and I voted exactly the opposite, so to me, that's a testament to why it's important for us all to be together, no matter if we don't agree. I said, but, but here we are, okay, I, I get it, like, this is where we're at, so we got to move forward. So my vote tonight was not intended to reflect a support for the decision. I don't have the concerns that apparently the majority have, although I don't have the privilege of sitting with all of you to know what those concerns were, which is very troubling. Uh, it, my, my vote, uh, is, it is the support of keeping with our poly, policy and, and word to a staff member. If I have little to no trust in the elected official, officials that I sit with, and I'm one of them, I would bet money that that mistrust is present in our staff as well. Our staff deserve the best working environment we can provide, they deserve consistency and fairness, they deserve to feel confident in sharing their professional and institutional knowledge, they deserve to not constantly be publicly second-guessed, and when they push, when they push back, because they are being asked to do something that does not reflect our current policy, which I know happens, they should not be expected to violate the policy. I hope we recognize that and work to build trust back. Elected officials traditionally take, like to take credit for the good, uh, that happens where they're at. Life is pretty good in Cedar Falls. Life is pretty good in Cedar Falls. It's important to recognize that while council policy and mayor leadership affects what happens in our city, and we should be proud of that, it is the city staff that truly does the work and makes this community consistent, safe, and a wonderful place to be. It is important for us to remember the roles of the city team. This is directly from our city website. The quote, "The mayor is responsible for carrying out the policies and ordinance of the city council, for overseeing the day-to-day operations of the city, and for recommending the appointments of department directors. Policy-making and legislative authority are vested in the governing council, which consists of seven members. The city council is responsible, among other things, for passing ordinances, adopting the budget, setting goals, and approval of boards and commissions. City staff is the part, this is, that's the end quote, now this is just me, free thinking. City staff is the part of the team that implements the council goals, following council direction, which oftentimes, I've heard it multiple times just tonight, we let this verbiage go back, that the city staff is leading, that is not true, they are following our policy and implementing our policy, they are the face that does that. None of us have any business giving, oh, it is a good reminder that all seven council members, individually, we have no power on your own. None of us have any business giving city staff direction on our own. It is also good to remember that it is the city council in Cedar Falls who sets the policy, and no single one of us, including the mayor, should be directing staff to not follow the policy unless the policy is discussed and changed. If you want to change the policy, make the referral. If the council does not agree with your referral, common sense would say move along."
Thank you councillor. And quick, similar to Councilman Hawbaker's comments, I don't, I won't speak to the, the decision itself and what led to it in terms of the decision-making criteria, but I do think for the public, I want to make sure we're clear with kind of how we got to this point. And Attorney Rogers, feel free to tell me if I start speaking out of line or saying anything I shouldn't say, in terms of what we can speak to and what we can't speak to. But what I want to speak to is that, from the beginning of this whole topic, it would have been much easier, my preference, if we could have gotten together and discussed this as a group. However, Attorney Rogers, and a lot of consultation with him, we did look at, okay, is this something we can discuss in executive session? Because I was getting concerns from council members on the performance of that position and wanting to review it. However, because of some current unclear rulings at the Iowa Supreme Court, it's uncertain if we're allowed to discuss that in executive session, or if we would have to come into public session to have those conversations, if there was something damaging, go back to executives. So I would have preferred, from the beginning, to get us together as a group. However, there was some difficulty in if we could have those discussions in the performance review format in an executive session. And so through my individual conversations with everyone, and you know, to your timeline, Councilman Hawbaker, I did receive messages from several of you that voiced some concerns about the position, about wanting to look at going in a different direction with it. And because of that, I had to begin talking with everyone individually, engaging a sense of where is everyone at on this, is this something we can do if we can't have an executive session to review it, and had to move forward with the, what I felt was the understanding of the majority of this body, to move ahead with the mutual separation agreement and bring that to you as we have. And so again, from the beginning, I would have preferred for that to be a more open conversation and a chance to have that as a group, because it is something that's a big decision and something that merits a lot of discussion. And to your point, Councilmember Dunn, a lot of impact on us as a community, on us as an organization, on us as a team, and I do wish that we could have been able to have that discussion as a group. However, I don't feel it was possible with where we felt, and through the process, felt the most appropriate ways to make sure I had a lot of conversation with everyone individually, to really get a sense of where everyone was at, and move forward with that decision as I did. So I appreciate you guys being willing to discuss your concerns because there, there's valid concerns there, and, and again, just appreciate the willingness of this body to continue to have those conversations and keep the city moving, so. Is there any other council updates or announcements?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Quick one here. Greg Raisentown, most people don't know about this, but at the Oster Theater, there's going to be a film highlighting the Iowa 150 bike ride, where a group of people, almost all from Iowa, biked across the United States this summer, 30 years ago, '95, and it was from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and it was a documentary, probably the Discovery Channel, I think, did it, and they're going to replay it, and it's quite interesting, there's a handful of people in the community that did this ride, not very many, but I was fortunate to be one of those people, and I biked 5,500 miles all summer long, rain, shine, sleet, heat, whatever, but besides that, it's quite entertaining. 285 people did this ride, so check it out, the theater. Three, three different showings, I'm not sure of the times though. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Any other council updates? Yep?
Yep, if I could, I, I'm going to misquote if it's the 103rd, I think it's the 103rd annual Cedar Falls Bible Conference, a true gem for our community, is happening next week, Saturday evening through the following Saturday. All those times can be looked over there. It's at the Riverview Conference Center, which actually has an addition to that facility that's just completed and will open. The Legacy Room is going to host a lot more people to have more opportunities for events there, and I think it is a true gem for folks, and I would encourage anybody to stop out and hear what the speakers have to say. There are morning and evening sessions and day camp, morning and evening vacation Bible School for younger kids, so they can come out and enjoy those festivities. It's been a longstanding benefit to the community, I encourage people to take advantage of that wonderful opportunity for us. I think that's all I have to say on this topic, given that I've reviewed the council updates and announcement section, I don't think we need to go back over all these other items, but I do think as a public service announcement, one piece that I would want to put out there, we council members are restricted by state law as to what we can talk about. We cannot talk with a quorum of council outside of an open meeting. So there are procedures, this is for public announcement, we can't talk to more than two other people about any given topic unless we are here in an open meeting before you all, because if we talk to a fourth member, that is a violation of state code. I've never violated state code. There is a benefit to having the mayoral role where they can visit with multiple members of council, so I want to make this public announcement just to say, if there was any perception of insinuation that there was some back-room deal, I was not part of one. If there's a disenfranchisement from anybody that's on council that feels that they weren't included, I would ask them to include themselves as much as possible within those legal means, but we're in the middle of a campaign season's or beginning, so as people know, this is not an easy job. I would ask anybody, feel free to poke fun at me later if you want, but look at some of the first recordings, I didn't have this much gray three and a half years ago. This council job has taken a bit of a toll. So I just want to make sure I clarified that for folks. Anything that we can talk about, like, open, you know, we, we do. So there's been a constant insinuation even before the time I ran that said, "Oh, there's these back-room deals that are happening." No, the mayor had to assess what he thinks is the consensus of council to put an item on the agenda, that's the same as it is with every single item on the agenda, that's what he did. We voted unanimously for that item. To bring it up in the council update section, I understand the rationale for the, the yes vote in support of the gentleman, and I, I think Ron Gaines is getting a, it's going well in this release, so that's what I'll say on that. But this idea that we just have this distrust all of a sudden, I think we can work on that, and that's been part of my goal, is to make sure that we don't have those issues. So just more information sharing is what we're doing here. There was no impropriety in this arrangement.
One last thing for me, if I, if I may.
You finish councillor.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're good.
Go ahead councillor.
I just, we certainly talked, and we talked a long time, and I'm just, want to make it absolutely clear, as we refer to whatever constraints we may feel that we would have had about meeting in the public, we certainly talked with candor, and I remain lacking any substantive reason for the decision that was made tonight, that's all.
Thank you councillor. Any other council discussion for tonight, or excuse me, any updates or announcements? All right, seeing none, we'll move to referrals, we did not have any written referrals, any pressing? Also seeing none, we will now look for a motion to move to executive session, so we need a motion in executive session to discuss property acquisition per Iowa Code, Section 21.51J, to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclose, disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the governmental body would have to pay for that property, or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council? Or any from the public? Seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. We will now move to executive session, we will not officially convene, or, in the meeting at this point, we will come back after executive session, but no further business will be discussed at that point, so thank you everyone for coming, you are welcome to stick around, but don't feel like you have to, so, thank you everyone.